Clock says just about six o'clock. It's Thursday, August fifteenth. Welcome, everyone. I'm going to call the select board meeting to order. First item is set adjust agenda. I have one small thing if Tanya did we get to add approve a liquor license for Cabot? No?
Uh.
I thought you did.
You did, but they had the wrong business name. It's not Cabot. It's Aglo Mark Inc.
Well, the state denied them.
Wow?
Yeah.
Because of the name?
Yeah, apparently their name was actually a registered business that they have, but they...
Whatever.
We don't know why. So wait, okay, so...
Class what liquor? Class two.
Which is? Liquor. I might end up doing that place after all.
Uh, so that's an item eight. Anything else?
There won't be a Harvard electric report. You mean two?
Sorry, no Harvard electric. Oh, any two?
No, weren't you going to make it two, not eight, though?
I thought she could leave item two.
Yes, that's what I meant. Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
That's not right.
Okay, um, and no Harvard electric report?
Correct.
Uh...
Motion to approve amended agenda.
No road forming report.
Second.
Uh, all in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
Okay, that's everyone.
I was reading.
I know.
Reading.
Um, alright, so next up is communication from the audience. Anyone here to discuss or present anything that's not on our agenda tonight? Alright, then we're going to roll forward to the town manager report.
Okay, I'll make this quick.
What's up with who needs the minutes?
Sorry, missed the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes is presented.
Second.
Two.
Uh, I thought they looked good too, so all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, any votes? Oh, it was all of us. Motion carries. Thank you, next.
We all participate.
It's not very many.
So I always say that I'm going to make it quick, but it always ends up being really long, so. Winter Set's going to start work on the bridge on Riverside Farm on Monday. They're going to start mobilizing tomorrow.
Yep, yep, yep.
And, uh, yeah, so they're excited about that. They'll get that done in a couple of weeks, so that bridge will be all set.
Awesome.
Um, there's some additional items that we discussed upstream today to be to help protect that bridge.
Hmm.
Uh, the, the riverbank on the upstream side of, uh, One, which is the one on the farm side.
Hmm.
Uh, we gotta, we gotta look at that because if we get more rushing water there, it's going to really, it could wreak havoc on that.
I'm going to trickle up, I agree.
We need to protect our investment, so there might be an added cost to bank armoring there. I gotta have those conversations, but we also might be able to do it.
Great.
So.
Well, at minimum, we will have our own bank armory material by then.
Exactly, yeah. I'm getting to that.
I know, I'm excited about it.
Thunder! Ah!
Okay.
Um, so gravel pit, we're going to be blasting on Monday, or drilling, starting to drill on Monday at ledge.
Really?
So we're going to have five to six thousand yards of bank up, of, of rock that we'll be able to use for bank armoring and more. Um, and that's just the beginning.
Great.
Yep.
So it's, so we've hired someone to drill and blast?
Main drilling and blasting, yep, yep.
And, sorry?
And we're preparing the site up there.
Yeah.
Um...
What about crushing?
Crushing is supposed to happen at the end, last week in August.
Crushing of the ledge?
Uh, crushing of gravel.
Gravel.
What about ledge?
We gotta work, we're gonna talk when the crusher comes in, as soon as the stuff is on the ground, we're gonna, we have to start sorting.
Like ten thousand yards put up to a bank run gravel to...
Yep.
Has to go through the crusher.
So there's a lot going on up there. We're also processing winter sand.
Winter sand, certainly.
Great.
Yep.
That's all good stuff.
Yep. Um... I got, uh, so the lead service inventory.
Oh, for the water lines.
Yes, we contracted with Al Rich and Elliot, and we put a mailer out with our last bill.
We did.
We are not, Al Rich and Elliot, um, the people we paid to do this inventory, they're not getting responses. So people need to respond to that flyer with their material of their water line come in, or in September, we have to go door to door, and the price is going to increase. So we have to pay them more if they have to go door to door.
So we need to do a better job of making sure people understand the lyrics. I didn't know about it.
We put a colored mailer front back in...
Right, but I still don't look at those things.
I got it, I set aside and...
Right, we need to do a better job.
I'll work on public messaging.
Yes.
Um, or just putting it on the web.
We could do that too, but...
I look at a Mountain Dew, the rest. So I, I'm sure I'm not the only person.
Right, it was a whole other piece of paper.
Absolutely looked at the Mountain Dew and threw the rest away.
So we...
So otherwise I would throw it out.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll do better messaging, but I thought tonight it would be good to get it out there for all those that watch the meeting, but I'm sure everyone that watches the meeting
Probably open theirs.
probably took care of it because they're responsible
Oh my god.
individuals
So...
that pay attention to town government.
So when doing...
They love themselves.
They love themselves.
So when doing the messaging, it, I think it'd be important to say what you just said about, um, that it's going to cost us more if we don't do our, if we don't do our...
I might just said that. It might not be entirely true because we have a contract right, so, but...
It's going to cost somebody more.
Yeah.
It's more work, unnecessary work.
It's more unnecessary work.
Right, we have other things to...
They could be spending time designing our new wastewater plant.
Yeah, absolutely. There are a number of things.
So I got a letter today that went out to everybody on the Ramon Mercy Management, let's say, that, um, permanent work funding is been, uh, will not be released by FEMA until the funding issue has been resolved in Washington.
What's the funding issue in Washington?
The election.
They have to fund the disaster fund. It's getting too low, so...
Oh.
Um, that kind of puts us in a, a tough spot because we have, uh, we, we've been authorized to do the work on the wall. Uh, the project, we have kind of everything in place.
The wall.
The wall.
On Main Street.
On Main Street, the retaining wall on Main Street. Um, but if we're not going to get paid for permanent work, we're going to have to, we, we know we're going to have to borrow money to do that work.
That was like four something.
It's two point four million.
Just for that?
Yeah. So, um, I'm just kind of looking for a little guidance on, I really don't want to borrow money for that, that much money for...
But we need to wait a little while. We gotta play it out a little while. We got, we're not in a position to borrow that kind of money, really.
Right.
Well, we could, but we don't want to borrow it if we don't know reimbursement cost.
So how much, yeah, I mean, what's the, we should talk, this should be a more in-depth conversation.
I'm just planting the seed right now.
So, because I got a bunch of questions.
I just got this information.
Right, for the next meeting, like, what's, what's the risk versus...
Well, I, I'm hoping by October, they're going to have a better idea, but we have permits to work in the river until October, so I, and we have a willing contractor.
Yeah, but I, this, I, this, uh, can't...
Right.
Otherwise, it has to wait all winter.
Well, it's, I mean, is that critical? It can't wait this winter?
It's, it's as critical as all the other pieces up through Main Street.
Man, how compromised is that wall?
It's...
Two point three dollars worth of compromise.
Oh, yeah, I'm not an engineer.
Yeah. I mean...
It's got, it's got a little more cracking in it than it used to have.
Sure, but if it falls into the river, that's kind of...
Yeah, but it's a long ways, it's a long way to bogging the river. I'm confident of that. It, I'm not, I, I mean, we need to take a serious look at the risk.
Yeah.
It's there. That's what matters.
So I'm thinking, I'm thinking...
I don't see it.
There's going to be more information. We also don't have a disaster declaration for this last year's storm yet.
Even for the emergency work?
Correct.
Of the July?
Correct.
Eleventh?
Correct.
Twenty-four.
Yeah.
Which is, we, we've done a substantial amount of emergency work.
Not as much as we did last year, but...
No, but we spent...
Yep, yeah.
That we're already on the hook for, no matter what.
And we know we're going to be spending about a hundred and sixty thousand on the bridge on Riverside Farm, like, that work's happening. That's this year's storm.
That's this year, that's emergency work. But it's permanent emergency. It's not a permanent fix?
He just puts it back the way it was, but it should be lasting, right?
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah.
But we're, we have to pay for that upfront because there's no declaration anyway.
We have to pay for everything.
Right. Right, but there's no back, there's no decoration for that, so...
Correct.
There's no reason for us to think that we're going to get anything at this point.
Correct.
Because it's been too long for, nobody's spoken a word about it anywhere.
Um, they, the state says it's coming. So I'm just letting you know that this is the, the juggling act that I'm faced with, uh, that, that our office is faced with on a daily basis as to where, where the best place to, to start with some of these repairs.
Yeah, which holds stick your finger in the dam.
Right, yep. And that's a good segue into my next item. Um, there's been a significant amount of conversation being had right now about, uh, the comprehensive study of the Jackson Dam by the natural, the Caloni County Natural Resource Conservation District. And there's money to do the study. Um, I did ask Scott Johnstone of EGD if he thought that it'd be a good idea to get some information. Um, he said that he thought it was a good idea. I talked to the conservation commission today. Uh, they said it would be a good idea, so I'd like to get your, um, your nod of approval to move forward with, um, getting information about the dam and the lake, because that's a big piece of the puzzle.
It is, but it's on the other side of the Black Bridge in the Lamo Valley Dam.
Yep.
Lamo Valley Dam.
Right, so...
So does that, will that help it? Will that, will that point into that?
Yes.
The study?
Yep.
I mean, it needs to, right?
The which?
Well, Black Bridge in Lamo Valley, Yale.
It plays into everything upstream, uh...
Yeah, I'd say, I'd say yes.
Pretty much the downstream bridge.
I mean, it needs to be looked at.
There's, there's no harm in more information.
Correct.
I mean, so with the thought, we're talking about taking the dam out is...
We're, that, I did not say that.
No, but I mean, that's what, yeah.
So ultimately, we might get information about that that might
I, I don't, I'm not pro, I'm not pro against that small dam. It's making a big difference, it's, uh...
Yeah.
Could be great, would, would this tell us what impact a dam is having on our
Potentially.
flooding, potentially?
I'm not an engineer.
Or is it more like, no, but I mean, are they, are they doing that more or are they just looking at the condition of the dam?
No, I think they're looking at the entire...
Kristin wants to try and function.
No, I won't, okay, no.
Okay.
You can't.
They're going to be looking at the geom, the, the geomorphic. It's the same thing they did before. They're going to be looking at all different aspects, and they'll be um, making assessment of how it will impact us in our floodplain and our...
Then we definitely want to know.
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Okay, check. That concludes my report.
Good night.
Fine job.
I'm also, I'm also going to ask, um, one of the things that I'm going to try to, um, get done if we do decide to go forward with the wall is have them remove the bridge, demolish the bridge.
The pedestrian bridge?
Yes.
Just so it's not helping anybody to have it there.
Correct.
Yep.
I'd, I'd, so, another piece of that is, is what the wall construction and the brick construction have to, have to
Match up.
somewhere, yeah.
Well, the, the wall...
There's not enough real estate there for them two projects, not to interfere with it.
The wall is ready for the bridge.
Really?
What we have gone out to bid with and what FEMA has approved. There's a red line in the plan. FEMA, bridge.
So...
The wall is kind of pedestrian bridge to diner.
The wall is a pedestrian bridge to the diner or from the pedestrian bridge back the other way?
No, to the diner.
Downstream pedestrian bridge.
The part that has been...
To the granite blocks.
Right.
Yeah.
It just so happens that that was pulled into the design for the pedestrian bridge because we realized you're going to be in there working there.
So what about the north of the pedestrian bridge walls?
That needs to be looked at too.
That's...
But we don't have a plan.
We don't have a plan for that.
It hasn't been...
Well, I thought, honestly, I thought the wall excluded, like, from the end down to...
Doesn't.
So you're talking two point four million for how many feet?
Like?
Yeah.
Fifty feet of wall.
So it's a hard no for me.
Okay, yeah.
That just changed.
Yeah.
Until there's a, until there's a plan for
So...
being in that river, we need to fix the whole wall for the whole thing. We're not going to leave everybody else hanging out to dry and fix a little park wall.
What's good about having to go out to bid, we got a, a, a number on the project, but we also have been having conversations with the construction, the general contractor, and he says that we could do a considerable, considerable amount of value engineering and that the micro piles that, that engineering ventures has called out are very, very expensive, and he questions if we need the micro piles.
Oh, I do as well.
Yeah. So I don't know if we want to have that reengineered, do a design build bid, I don't know. There's just, this is, this is a lot of...
Another big project.
Yeah, so anyways, let's move on.
And we still have problems on all the way upstream.
I have two questions on two bridges.
Yeah.
So Fisher Polly and Harsh Farms.
Fisher Polly's on.
Great.
Yep.
Fisher Polly's set on makeshift abutments in a makeshift location with a temporary bridge, so it's...
The, the temporary work is complete. They're, they're able to get it in that works.
Very temporary.
But it should be noted that it's extremely temporary.
It's not the same as the Riverside Bridge where the abutments are still there.
Right, which is going to be a temporary fix that we're going to be able to live with for a couple of winters if we need to.
Yeah.
Oh, we're long, yeah.
Yeah, or until the deck runs, right.
Harsh Farms.
It's open.
Great.
Nice, that's good.
Yep, and we, Tyler, Mommy's going to start engineering on that. Hopefully have a product to go out to bid for in the spring.
Great.
Yep.
But there's no funding.
Other, we don't know about funding.
Correct.
We just learned that it's a little...
Correct, but by the spring, we should know. Hopefully by October, we should know.
October because that's when the federal government's supposed to pass their budget.
Correct.
But they don't seem to actually pass it anymore.
Well, nothing is going, so it'll be happening, I think, so, yeah.
Okay.
You can only hold that right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So long.
That was pretty short.
So I just have one little question.
Yep.
Um, so we have the other primary roadside. Is there some reason why we have to put it up?
We have another sign?
We have another sign.
Or are we talking about road sign?
Yeah, a roadside that identifies the road on the other side. It's not up. We own it, but we don't have it up. Is there some reason why we're going to have it up?
Uh, time and a day.
After a while, but, okay.
Yeah, but we can get it up.
Okay.
It's your job to tell Tom to prioritize that.
Just keep asking. I just keep asking because it's still over there, not marked. Across from the health center where people are parking when they're busy.
Yeah, we moved the P up here so people could park. I don't know if it's still a problem at the health center, but they call me when there's a problem. I haven't...
Yeah, well, still roadside, it's not up.
Got it. We'll put it up.
Okay, I'm going to move us on, um, to Harvick Police Department report.
Well, uh, we're having to make a change because restraining orders, what, each county had a person that just designated for restraining orders. Now they've decided to provide it up in different police departments, so it's getting scattered all around. Now Harvick City has to go up to the, go to take the bunch in this area, so we're working on that right now. If I can add on more.
Can you explain a little more? So previously it was...
Previously, so, uh, each county had a hold station, so from Lamo County, it was a lot of my share department. They hauled on to all restraining orders that were in effect. Uh, for Caloni County, it was the same about their police department, hauled on to all of them. Now they're digging that up into different areas and we're selected to keep them from this area.
What, what area? What area?
Mainly Harvick, but it could be, it could be surrounding towns as well.
That's not going to happen.
Well, we don't have a choice in this matter.
Who, who's mandating that?
Yeah, who decides that? Who's mandating? It's, I have to check, it's who's mandating that.
Yeah, we're not doing it.
Yeah, nice.
Well, there's, there's also the people from the surrounding towns that affects Harvick, and those restraining orders are in effect here, but...
Anyway.
Yeah.
That's a problem.
It is a problem. We'll deal with it. We have to deal with it. We don't have a choice in matter, uh, so...
This is like, and dealing with it is like a database sort of thing?
It's filing the actual restraining orders.
They're paper or electronic?
But you have to do the work, like, people have to come.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then you have to serve that through?
No, 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 these could be served. Uh, it could be something, let's say we have a case that, uh, for example, we had a domestic case that came up here. We dealt with it, but people are from Woodbury. We would own that. Uh, they filed restraining orders, we would own those restraining orders. They stay in our area. So there's a lot more of them because of the paper copies, so we hold on to them until they're...
Which needs to go to court with a court case, so that actual paper document has to be in a court case.
But if that...
Sent to the court, the, the county court.
So it's a lot more work for...
Just, it's, it's a little bit more work, more filing for us. It was, it was easier before when you had one, one person doing it for the county, and I was going to be divided up. State police has to take some of it as well, so it's not just going to be...
Does it change, does it change who responds to violation to those? Okay.
No, I mean, not at all.
Okay. Wasn't there just a statewide database?
Because that'd be easy.
Come on now.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not making sense, Eric.
Alright, sorry. Alright, what else is going on in your world?
We're, people are head above the water right now with the short staff, and that's, that's about it. Trying to keep things going. Like I said, we have, uh, one, uh, level three academy right now, another one being, uh, training is a level two. Uh, we got another one ready for the part-time academy, for the level two academy in September, so, um, it's going to take a little while to get people up to work.
Okay.
Take time to gear, get some of your time.
Alright.
Sure.
Are there any questions for me? Alright, thank you. Um, alright. Item one, uh, select board to approve the mailing a local ballot for justice of the peace to all active voters accompanied by the general election ballot being mailed by the state. So, um, is this something that goes into the mailer or?
No, so we can put the justice of the peace nominees on the backside of the ballot for the general election. They will do that for us so that it can go through the tabulator, but because the secretary of state's office is mailing all ballots to registered voters this year, and this is a local election, we need your permission to mail the ballot with the JPs on it to all registered voters. No cost, the state's doing it, so no county cost, but...
I think motion that, uh, we mail local ballot for justice of the peace to all active voters accompanied by general election ballot.
Second.
Uh, more discussion? Um, do we have, in the past, we've had a shortage of justice of the peace?
We have nine out of ten right now. We did have ten, but one moved, and going on the ballot will be at least ten.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so all in favor of mailing that, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any votes? Motion carries, thank you. So our new item two, um, also a Tanya item is to approve a class two liquor license for Aglo Mark.
Aglo Mark Inc., which is the Aglo Mark.
Yep.
And that would be for the sale of beer wine. You guys approved it in June, but they had Cabot because the business name, Aglo Mark, should save.
So moved there?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next is item three, select board consider allowing Harvick Downtown Partnership to give a coin drop in August twenty twenty-five, the month of Spill Hill.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Alright, any opposed? Motion carries. Next is item four, select board consider appointing, um, oh, I'm sorry, is it Gillian or Jillian?
It's Gillian. Gillian DiCherno. It's two hard words.
Thank you, as an alternate on Harvick Planning Commission for the remainder of a three-year term, inspiring June three, twenty twenty-six.
So moved.
Second, yeah.
Well, we can discuss it.
Yep, and thank you for your letter of interest. Um, great. People have any questions for Jill?
No.
Today, the Girl Planning Commission meeting already.
Oh, wow, well done.
And you still want to be there.
Yeah, that's good. Good, good stuff. Thank you so much for, um, for coming forward and for doing that.
Right, for coming in tonight.
And for coming tonight, yeah. So all in favor of appointing Jillian to the planning commission as a alternate, right?
Yes.
Uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks so much for coming in. Appreciate it, and thanks for being willing to serve the planning mission. Next is item five, select board consider cannabis license renewal for route to Vitality Cannabis LLC. So, aye, are you, are you root to Vitality?
Yes, my wife and I, yeah.
Excellent. Um, and we saw your application was in our packet. Sounds like you've been there, but the state didn't see fit to send it to us or something? I don't know, I was confused by that.
I was too. I, I, uh, I, the renewal process is sort of complicated for us too.
Yeah.
And, uh...
Because we've seen, we've...
It could be my fault that I didn't reach out to you guys at the same time.
I don't know. Now the state is supposed to send it. Kristen's got her hand up.
So, um, the HOPIS went through the DRB process, and it did everything they were supposed to, and it went back to the state. The state did not, the can, cannabis control board did not realize that East Harvick was part of Harvick.
Right.
And so everybody needs to learn sometime.
Well, so when they gave their licenses, they looked through the list and saw that Harvick had a local control board, but East Harvick did not, and they issued the permit, actually the license last year without bringing...
That's what it looked like, yeah.
Well, we, we came last year.
You came to Harvick?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so that's why you have the DRB decision in there.
Right, and the DRB, and so...
So they, rather than disrupt their business, they waited until the...
Yeah. Another example of the state not firing on all cylinders.
So, just so you know, the role of us as a cannabis control board are really, the only reason, I think, that we could deny a license would be if you violated your zoning conditions and, um...
And or had a complaint that they...
No complaints, it's unappreciated.
Yeah.
That, yeah, I was going to say, I'm hoping for...
Yeah, no, no complaints.
Yeah, oh, there's a complaint, but, yeah. But since you have your state permit and since you're compliant with your zoning...
So I can, let's, uh, a motion to, uh, approve the cannabis license renewal for Route to Vitality Cannabis LLC.
Second.
Uh, any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for coming in.
Yeah, of course, yeah. Do you guys have any questions for me or anything?
No.
Do you have any damage in the flood?
Uh, our, thankfully, our house was okay. Um, we, maybe I'll email Kristen here.
Yeah, I was going to talk to you outside.
But, uh, our access to our property, you know, Lemoyle is one border, the rail trail, and then I forget the name of the creek. Um, our crossing held, but we weren't able to get out until a little over twenty-four hours after.
Yep.
Um, a lot of property damage, but nothing to the structure itself.
Yep.
Um, other people have it way, way worse, so we, I guess if there's, uh, some info on some funding that's available, we we appreciate it to help out and stuff.
Yeah.
But yeah, other than that, we're, we're good.
Yep.
Thank you guys.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, next up is item six, select board to consider accepting one of the two proposals received for the emergency watershed protection program project and authorize a town manager to sign a contract. So this is for.
Weren't the prices quite a bit different, Opey?
They were quite a bit different.
Yeah.
With the scope, I didn't dig into the proposals, but.
So, so we have forty-five thousand of technical assistance funds.
Hmm.
Um, and the two other projects were taken on by the NRCS.
Hmm.
To, so that, those are covered. So we have forty-five thousand to do the one project. And New England, the New England Consulting Engineers meets the requirements. They've been, uh, both of these proposals have been sent to NRCS for review and they're just waiting for us to make a choice.
So we'll go with the, the one we can afford.
Right, the lower cost.
Yeah.
They look the same when they go through.
This is the second time MSK put in, they were the only ones that put in before. And, um, Mike, uh, Michael O'Point from NRCS was, he took it and sent it back and said, well, if you decide to, he, I think he stayed out of his, having his opinions, but he says, if we go with the MSK, we have to cover the cost. The cost has to be covered by us.
The difference.
The difference has to be covered by, um, the landowner and or the sponsor. So I think that New England Consulting Engineers can do the work. I think they're more than capable and I think their price is more reasonable.
We go with, uh, New England, what is it?
New England Consulting Engineers.
Yes.
Yeah.
For price, so can you read out the price?
Uh, thirty, it's thirty-five.
It was way in the back.
Yeah.
Twenty-six eight.
Yeah.
Twenty-six thousand eight hundred?
Yeah.
For, alright, so you made the motion?
Yes, please.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And just for clarity for anybody who may be following along, so this project, as it wasn't entirely clear to me, interaction will be debated.
Yeah.
So it's in the village of East Hardwood, just downstream of the bridge, the main street bridge.
Yes.
Uh, it's the property known as a river house.
Correct. Yeah. And we, we, um, we requested NRCS assistance for the emergency watershed protection program.
Right.
And this is all federal funds, federally funded, and we are the sponsor to the project for three properties.
And can you remind me of the other two properties, cause I just can't remember?
Um, where they are. One is, um, fifteen off the Haynesville Brook.
Okay, so that's heading towards Walden.
Yep.
Yep.
And the other one is the property right next to, uh, it's the old, old building supply, Heart of Building Supply, Jerome Building Supply. Next to.
Ford Memorial Village.
Park Motors, I don't know, I'm, I go.
He's way back.
Yeah.
Oh, right, right, no, I'm looking now, yep.
The, the.
What's his name?
Yeah, yeah, no.
What's his name, lives in it now?
Yeah, yeah.
Our energy coordinator.
Okay. Alright, so, so with this, then we'll get all, all three of them will be going.
Yep.
And, and where's, where's this sponsors, we, we're not kicking any of their money, we're just.
We.
The entity that the federal monies run through.
We, it's reimbursed, reimbursement pays.
But we pay or the, no, 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 we don't pay.
Um.
No, no. Homeowner, they don't.
I don't know about, I think it's, I don't know about the, if it's reimbursement or they.
Cause they can, you know, when they came here, I don't know why it was clear that we weren't putting down money into.
I'll bet it's getting, NRCS is picking it up.
Alright.
Yeah.
Pick it up, put it right back in our pockets. Okay, that's, that's fair. They can use it, they can use it a little bit, they just can't have it.
No.
Borrow away.
Yeah, that's fine, we'll help you out, but.
Yeah.
We, cause otherwise I got some stuff I need done.
So.
So is there a motion?
There's a motion on the table and a second.
Second.
So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Imposed. Motion carries, so we're gonna go with, um, the.
New England.
New England Consulting Engineers, right.
Not New England Municipal Consulting.
That's what I wanna say, yeah.
I do it too.
Trips me up. Um, very good.
Item six.
Uh, yeah, this is now seven. Select board to consider spending the town real estate proceeds of the sale of Kerry Road when that sale closes on blasting and operation of the town gravel pit. Sounds like a good idea to me.
Yeah.
Sounds like a great idea to me.
Where's the money from the main street property?
That'll be a long time coming. I mean, they're, 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 they're still on that, right? My, it's just that you have to have it all. Right.
Their funding is.
Tight, uh, yeah, I know how it works.
What do you call it?
Is that it?
Is.
It's gotta be shovel ready. It's gotta be, everything's gotta be in place.
Right, yeah.
So they need to hear it.
All the financing, all the permits, it's gotta be a hundred percent.
So it won't be a long, long time.
No, but it's.
It won't be this year.
Right.
Back, back to the point, I make a motion to spend the real estate proceeds of the sale of Kerry Road when it happens on the blasting and operation of the town gravel pit.
We have a motion?
Second.
So more discussion? I do wanna know roughly, I mean, I think that's a great use of the funds, I wanna know roughly what we're anticipating for cost upstairs.
Oh, but then.
I mean.
Maybe we get to that before.
That's why I'm wondering what her money is for right now.
So there's no, he's gone, so I've been working really hard to help Opey do some of this. Accurate record keeping is gonna be key to the resource.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't know, he, he probably knows the exact figures, but I'm sure. So we got, we have the opportunity to provide our own material. Money's gonna be the thing holding us back.
Right.
I don't know how much the crushing costs.
I was just wondering, so we just voted to.
Do it.
Go ahead and use that proceeds from the sale to do that, but I was just wondering, what's the.
What's that gonna be?
General budget, yeah, what's?
Do you have a, did, what's the price on the blasting?
What's that? Uh, five, five ninety-five a cubic foot.
And how much they plan on blasting?
Uh, about six thousand, five to six thousand cubic feet.
So is that thirty grand?
Close.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six, yeah. And then, so we have money already up in our budget.
For crushing.
For crushing of the bank run gravel.
We have sixty thousand.
Right.
Yeah.
So, and that must be about the same price, what's the crushing cost over there?
I haven't got crushing cost on that.
So it's, well, even on my gravel, what's our gravel, we got sixty thousand for our gravel.
We usually, I think.
It's gotta be pretty close to six.
I don't know if we, uh.
I don't remember, it's been going.
I'm not prepared, I'm not prepared with, with the actual number.
No, no. And I was gonna start doing some ciphering on that.
Okay, but just in general.
Yeah.
The, the approach, so the timing is probably gonna be such that, that property sale is probably gonna close in the coming month or two, right?
Yeah.
And then, um, and meanwhile, we're incurring some costs for blasting and then we hope some crushing.
And prepping, prepping for blasting, drilling and then blasting, drilling and blasting is five.
Right, so now the.
We've got a little bit of prep work too.
Yep.
And consulting.
Yep, and so for this fiscal year that we, that we're in, the proceeds from that property sale will kind of cover the additional expenses.
It should easily.
Yes, easily cover.
How much is that part? From drilling and blasting is one, but then the prep and consulting is?
Um, five thousand.
Okay.
Well, a little bit of that.
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand, look at forty to fifty thousand, yeah, max.
Yeah.
And then, and then that's all material though, I mean, the other way, the other thing to keep in mind is all the material that we're getting is material that we would have purchased somewhere else.
Correct. And truck.
Including the material that we've been using for the last month, the bank run gravel. We've already started utilizing that.
Yeah, and what, so what my strategy is, is we wanna use as much product out of that pit because we can, we can get reimbursed for it with our FEMA projects.
Right, if we're using our own stuff for our FEMA projects.
Basically, everything we've used so this month, this last month is FEMA.
It's gonna be, FEMA's gonna pay us for that.
If, if there's a declaration.
And that was, if there was, but I, I believe it'll have to be because of the damage. But, I mean, that, that, that material, it's gotta be five, six hundred yards already that they've taken out of there. That material only costs a few hours of my time in equipment rental, so we've got maybe twenty-five hundred dollars in it at the most. Just.
Yeah, it's.
You know, versus ten fifty a yard, which is a hundred and.
Yeah, plus more.
Sixty-five dollars a load, plus more trucking, right, substantially less truck.
So, I also am very curious, and I know you, nobody knows the answer to this, but I'm very curious to see what kind of crushed ledge product, product, like a state map product, we might be able to get.
It's gonna be an excellent, so that's something that we're going to try to get the crusher to crush some of the ledge, so now the ledge will be blasted, drilled and blasted.
Right.
They don't have to be sorted.
Yeah.
And then it has to be crushed.
Right. And then even after crushing, like in most pits, they crush and then there's sorting right after.
Right, but that's part of the crushing, that's, that's the crushing, crushing.
You end up with different.
Different products.
Yeah.
We need, we need like a three-quarter inch, yes.
Yeah.
But, uh, ditch stone.
Yeah, we need that.
And three-quarter inch stem out.
Yeah.
Are the two things that.
That would be great.
That we need on a pretty much daily basis. I mean, they go to Danville, they go to Danville a lot.
You're optimistic that we will make those things.
Oh, absolutely. I'm quite confident we're gonna have a good product too, cause it's.
And the Act two fifty amendment is, not, hasn't been submitted yet, but it's in the works. It's drafted, it's.
The fact that we'll have a fully functional operation.
Calling them tomorrow, I'm gonna call Act two fifty tomorrow and give Chris consultant an update on the, what we've been doing.
Yeah.
Just the play lines.
Yeah, that's great. And, um, that is, to me, that's really excellent news because the place that we've been able to use, um, crushed ledge products on our roads, the roads seem to hold up better.
Yeah.
The surface is better.
And our bank run gravel will work good this year too, because we have a lot of spots where we need to build up road and it'll work fine for that.
Yeah.
Cause it works fine and, and so we had all the tailings left over from the previous sand separation operations, so that's just stone.
Yeah.
So I mixed it, I basically built the dirt.
Got another, so, um, we did a grant aid project on Stage House Road, so that's all reimbursable. And we use some of our material on that road.
That's the grant aid program that we've been doing for several years because it probably connected some months.
Yeah, yeah.
Better ditching, better.
Yeah. Correct.
Yep. Great. Well, that's all, that's all great, that's all great news.
It's good news.
Yeah.
We actually vote on that? Or we're in discussion?
We're in discussion, I, I got up and came back and we said.
That's cool.
Did we vote on that?
I think Dan made a motion, I stuck into the.
I've also rebuilt the road into the place.
Great.
And, and get, um, all the water is under control, under management at this point as well.
So it's a great asset for us.
It's, it is extremely good asset, yes, it's very, very, very nice.
Excellent.
If you're into dirt, it's a really cool place.
So, alright, so hearing that we have not actually called the vote, or have not called the vote, that's all in favor of, uh, going ahead and spending the real estate proceeds on the gravel pit, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, imposed. Motion carries, and thank you guys for all the work on that. Next, item eight, select board to set a date for a public hearing about VCDP grant that RP was showing applying for.
Ah, see that? They weren't just stopping by to visit, I knew they were, they were. You're doing a good job though, I gotta give you credit, you know how to get shit done.
So, let me just preface this. Um, so we, we have to be, we set up, we have access to tiers, which is the portal in which they apply for the grants. We have to set them up under our, um, login, um, which we have done in the past with other VCDP grants, and then they will do all the applications and, but this is a required other grant application, the public hearing.
The dates that we're requesting are Tuesday, September tenth, Wednesday, September eleventh, or Thursday, September twelfth, which is the, the total deadline for the grant.
Well.
Um, yeah, there's another hearing that you're having on one of your other regular scheduled hearings.
I don't think we can have.
We live, this is my anniversary.
We can't have.
Remember, it's not the twenty seconds.
We can't have that public hearing on two different things at the same time, I don't think.
Right, so that's why we have to have an exceptional date.
Yeah.
We can have two public hearings, one right back to back.
We can.
Yeah, we can both one, close it, the other.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm.
You told me we've been.
So we already have something? We already have something.
For the fifth.
The fifth, okay.
The fifth.
So I'm confused about why, so who's the applicant for the grant?
RP.
It has to go through the town, but we're the, we're the, um, beneficiary, the eventual beneficiary.
The grantee.
I'm not sure what, who.
It's like the housing partnerships.
Who has bad don't.
So, so.
Pushes me the other way.
Town is the fiscal agent essentially. So what's the amount of the grant you're seeking?
It's a hundred and twelve thousand and one hundred and two.
And a hundred and two?
No, yeah, it's a hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and two dollars.
Oh, one hundred and two.
To do what?
And, well, we're, we're already building the house.
Oh, for another place.
And it's, and we're not seeking this for, for capital, we're seeking this for operational. So to get, to, to hire the staff to, um.
So I come down through there the other day, down the Class Four Road.
It needs.
Headed to, headed to the ground.
Doesn't it?
Well, I'm telling you, I was quite impressed that it's still in as good a shape as it is with no maintenance. And I questioned, yeah, I'm, I'm a save the Class Four Road guy, but I think that one should take very little bit of maintenance and leave it right alone. Um, it was in much better shape than I thought, it's handled the rig range really well.
Yeah.
That big ditch down right by the, where you drive way, your road there, I mean, that, that.
The last two floods, that's how I was able to get.
Yeah, so I don't know if we wanna, I, that was my gut feeling, and I'm the dirt guy, is like, boy, this, we should just leave this right alone. Cause it's still possible, but given, once I got down through there, then I, it's been quite a while since I've been down through there, there's several new structures since I've been down through there. It's been years, so, um. So I was, I, I was quite impressed, it looked like a fully, very functional little community and, um.
We've done a little grading on the lower level.
Yeah, but it was, uh, you know, it looks, it's, other than the hill to get there, it's a perfect spot for you.
Beautiful, because of the hill, we don't, we don't often get flood damage.
Yes.
Our fields sometimes get hit, one or two of our culverts do.
Yep.
But.
So I'm just thinking about some practical concerns, so if we're, so is those VCDP grants are typically reimbursable, right? They're not money upfront, you spend it and submit for reimbursement?
That's right, I think that's right.
Do not spend on our money, that's money. Do not spend on our money, that's my damn money.
Yeah.
Okay, and it doesn't sound, I, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like that amount is low enough that's not gonna trigger a single audit. Which is another expense for the town. When we have grant funds in excess of.
Are they federal?
Oh, maybe that's just federal.
Yeah, this is due to ACCE.
Right, right, state. So it wouldn't trigger a simple audit anyway. Okay.
And we've been working for days in Cleveland. He said that any expense that the town occurs would, would be reimbursable through this. So like for, for sending out the notice, for example.
Right, administrative costs.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so.
I move, or we gotta move or?
So the only, the only question I can't answer right now, and, cause Tracy had said that we couldn't have two hearings on the same day, is what the space between the notice and the hearing has to be. You don't know that, do you David?
The what?
The notice.
We have to put out a, a public notice.
Fifteen days.
We can, yeah, we can have two different hearings the same day, but I think she may have meant you can't do your, maybe you have to have two hearings or something?
No, just have to have.
Doesn't matter, let's pick a day.
And we've got fifteen days, if it's on the fifth, we still have the fifteen days.
Pick a day, Sharon.
Well, I think the fifth is good if we're already here.
I think it's perfect.
The first public hearing starts at five, though.
What is the first one about? So let's start this one at five forty-five.
Yeah, this one.
You think we're gonna have a fifteen minute meeting about the biologin organization? Oh, forty-five.
And if we start there, it's a little late, you do. There's, there's not a take very long.
So we already have, Amanda's.
Oh, that started at five. Okay, sorry. Yeah.
Five forty-five on September fifth?
Yes.
There's a little bit of a gamble there that'll push into our select board meeting in six, but I.
I'd be willing to bet on our dollars if you're right now, it won't.
Well, that's why I'm suggesting it.
You wanna bet?
You can't bet. Not bet in a public meeting.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
After, gambling is illegal.
Is it?
Rules party, nope.
Man, drinking and gambling's illegal.
Alright, so, okay, so we'll just, we'll set it, we'll set it for the fifth then.
Five forty-five on the fifth.
Five forty-five on the fifth.
Thank you so much.
Yep. Got it.
We're on it.
Great, I'll talk to Tracy.
Nah, surely, we're at the end, right?
Yeah.
Select board reports.
We're dinner time.
Tonight's the last chamber players concert at the.
Oh, ready?
Yep.
Yeah, summer.
Oh my god.
Um, and so they'll, and supposedly the construction crew's gonna be back early next week.
Oh, nice.
We haven't gotten confirmation on that yet, but.
There we go.
That's the hope.
Uh, that's exciting.
Yeah.
Okay, that's cool. Any other reports? There's been a report something like this going on now. Any new business?
Nothing about the L B R T or?
L B R T, yeah, so is open. L B R T is open again heading towards Wolfpass. All the way, actually, I think all the way from here to Swan is open.
Yes, I think it is, I heard that.
Yeah, and we still have a little, uh, there's still a, and I, there's still a small detour in East Hardwick or the bend, right, where they have that big dig, and then the St. John's Berry thing is closed currently. From St. John's Berry, but yeah, so.
Well, it looks to the pile, there it is, not that close. We gotta detour. There must be a big hole over there.
Wait, the St. John's Berry? Yeah.
There's a pile of the sand in that, that little quarry right there that they've logged out of that real trail. It is five, three, four, five thousand yards.
Really?
Where is it?
Just past the Harkenrak.
Oh, I heard about that.
Yeah, I mean, it's as big as I've ever seen a pile there.
Tetro's over there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I heard about that.
So there's gotta be a big hole up there somewhere, cause that's material they took out. So there must, they're stuck like in East Harbor trying to get to the bottom.
Cause the bottom's way down there.
Which, so, that was trail drag twenty years, but. We have a lot of need right now, and priority shouldn't have been a goddamn road jam. It was. Who?
Rec. Minute.
New business?
New business. Old business?
I got old business too.
Oh.
Katie wanted one to two select board members to volunteer for the water and serve our new rates.
Oh, that'd be Tim.
Discuss them in late August and September.
That'd be who?
Timmy Kayle. Kayle, she's not here, Tim, cause he's a new guy.
Your first ad hoc committee.
Are you, are you still in that or no?
Say it again, the dates?
We have to set the dates, yeah, but.
So soaking water into our rates, which we do every year, and we set, we need to set the rates to meet the budget, which we, which has already been set. Um, and it's a whole separate enterprise fund, so it has its own budget, and then the rate payers pay the rates to meet the budget. The last couple of years, the last year anyway, we haven't really.
The last couple of years, we let Eric do it and they've gone up, so we'd like some new blood in there. No, it's not that.
I've done it for several years, yeah.
I was just kidding, by the way, I, Tim doesn't.
I mean, I, I hear that. I'm an adult, Danny. What's the obligation to, what?
Probably, it's probably, in this case scenario, it's probably, it's, it's something last year was a one hour long meeting, I think.
One meeting?
I think it was one last year.
I mean, you can only do so much, you can only do so much with it, you know what I'm saying?
Right, there's not that much flex in it.
You gotta, you gotta cover.
Be good practice.
It's worth studying beforehand and.
You'd understand it how it works. That's, that was my, that's the only reason I ever do anything, is cause I wanna figure out how it works. It's not cause I enjoy it.
Well, then you should join too.
I've been on that committee. I'll do it, I'm not scared. As long as I can call in on my phone and my truck.
No, that doesn't mean I do well.
We need in person.
What's it pay?
Thousand dollars a year.
You have done, used your thousand dollars up. I'm like Tommy, budget's done till the end of the year. Till my new fiscal year. You guys have gotten all out of me, you can.
Okay, so.
You bleed me dry.
Are we wanna, I, I don't know about Kaylee, cause we.
No, I, I, not volunteering Kaylee. So when are we gonna meet?
Late August.
At what time of day?
The worst time.
I gotta work, so I don't wanna commit.
Between seven thirty and three thirty.
I don't wanna commit, it's something I can't do, that's all. You know I wanna do or not to.
Well, we could, if you wanted to, we could do like a, a seven thirty to eight thirty meeting.
Okay, you set up, I'll be there.
I could do a Thursday morning, later.
Well.
I mean, I.
Yeah.
So I could do it too, Danny.
We could do mornings.
Have more fun.
It's really, right now is a really bad time for me.
So I'll do it with him.
A Thursday, a Friday morning would probably be. Thank you guys for continuing your civic duty.
Yeah.
Do Thursday and Friday for free today.
I missed my cardiologist meeting last week, come on. That's more important than this shit.
Thursday is preferable to Friday.
I'll let her know.
But I'm hard to predict.
Phew, that was close.
Alright, so she'll reach out and say something?
Yes.
Sounds good.
I was supposed to bring her, bring that up.
Okay, Sharon, you have an old business?
My old business is last meeting, we talked about the AARP report for pedestrian safety on South Main Street. We, I, I felt like we reached a consensus that we were going to, um, have that walkway painted, you know, from, on South Main Street that we talked about. Did you, is there any more developments with that?
I don't remember the consensus, or, yeah, consensus, that was the minimum that could be done.
And.
That, that would be a start.
So I think that we, we just put a bunch of stuff back together, uh, roads and, and infrastructure, some infrastructure. So I think that we could probably put this on our to-do list and get this done. Uh, it would be nice to get this done before school starts.
Right, I mean, I think that's pretty tight, but I think it would also help.
Just on a state, you contract, you just call Ellen Fead, I'm running the truck down through there, about ten seconds, we done. Ain't gonna take you guys a minute.
I think it would help Kristen with her work with the fire marshal.
Right.
That whole, and the parking problems that happen there, if there's a big green thing that they're parking on top of. You know, cause she's been working.
Cars are parked too close to some of the houses.
Oh, God, trust me.
Oh, and the no parking?
Yeah, and no parking.
Well, that's only because they're in the road, that's why they're too close to the house, cause the other half's in the road.
Anyway, I just wanted to make sure we were actually gonna move forward with that. It, it wasn't really reflected in the minutes thoroughly. So I just wanted to back up and.
I agree with you.
What we decided was that the, the crosswalk as proposed wasn't gonna be practical.
We were gonna do the crosswalk because it wasn't, didn't work.
And so, but then we could run that pavement.
So there was a very.
Walking lane.
And the pavement is wide enough all the way through there.
Yeah, yeah, we measured it on our.
Yeah.
I almost shared it with you guys. There was a very interesting article, um, about the town of St. John's Berry, uh, St. Albans. Put in a new sidewalk that took several years, and they used, uh, money from, they had a hundred, they, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars from the, uh, sale, local sales tax option thing.
Yeah.
Um, started the project and ended up getting four hundred in it. Um, it's just, it was a very interesting story because it was new, new sidewalk bill that took, you know, ten years to, to get it done, and it costs three times as much as it was supposed to, and, um, it was just an interesting story. They had basically the same problem we have, and it was actually, it would be like, like that sidewalk. And a lot of people were upset because they used essentially sales tax money from the, you know, the village or the city. And this is on the out, this is, this, yeah, designated downtown, and this was from the designated downtown out.
But it was to get people.
In, right, but you know, some people had.
Yeah, this is all in our designated.
Well, and if you have a local option tax, you can, I mean, they use that much there, but then they still have the local option tax and.
Right, but it was, it was just, it was.
They paid for their new camper house with the local option tax.
It was one of those, there was one of those stories, it's like, yeah, well, we are, you know, we're not the only ones having exactly the same problem. In many ways, and from the design to the, to the implementation, to the cost, all the same problems everybody's having.
Yeah.
So that'd be great.
Okay, so we're still pushing forward with that?
Yeah.
Great.
That's something we're gonna contract the painting out. We're not gonna get those guys out there with a brush, right? Good.
Well, they were contracting it out.
Well, that's not an easy job. It's not, nothing they're gonna do with a roller and.
Eventually. La, does, does Laughay add?
Yeah, no, L and D, there's, there's several guys and they'd ride around them trucks, they'll spray that. Ten minutes, they'll be done. It'll take longer for somebody to lay it out, which, I don't know about State Highway, you should probably check.
That's in our.
We can do anything we want.
It's, we measured it all out when we did that whole.
Yep, fine.
P thing, it's all.
Yep, so somebody will have to lay it out. They'll come through with a truck and go, and it'll be over with. I mean, you could do it with a roller and.
But if it's, I'm just thinking.
Four guys up for two days.
If it's over five thousand dollars or something, we should put it out to bid and then it needs to come back, that's for a vote.
Think you should call L and B and say, I need this done. And when they come through in the quiet, six o'clock in the morning, everybody wake up and there'll be a white line right down through there.
I wish, I wish life was that easy.
Want me to get it done?
Me too. Yeah?
Are we blasting Monday?
We're drilling, yeah.
Yeah, alright. Don't doubt the power. Don't doubt my power. Of staying on you guys.
Oh, alright, okay.
It'll be done. Go up to the pit, check it out.
Um, what is, okay, so our next meeting is the fifth, right? Okay.
That's the old business.
Go ahead.
So you guys asked me to come up with a plan of like how more personnel would help in the office.
Correct.
And we really need some project management. Um, we were talking about, um, project management for the staff, which we're still gonna do, it's gonna be grant funded. But I really think that would help. And, or we move, I've just been thinking about different scenarios. And, or we move myself into a more project manager role, and then we do something else for like, cause I, I would, I'm not able to like spend a lot of time in front of my computer and send emails, and I get fifty, seventy-five, a hundred emails a day. I don't think I've sent a dozen emails this week, just because people come in the office, because I'm pulled away from the office for things, so I don't know. The project management is the time suck for me. And getting.
So you need some, you need a, you need, you need an assistant that you can delegate some things to. Because you still need the oversight. We're not, cause we're not hiring a new, you know, somebody that's gonna be in charge of anything.
No.
You just need somebody to do some of these project management tasks i- in conjunction with you, not necessarily.
Right.
Out on their own, so.
What's a part-time position, do you think, or is it?
See, that's the, the part-time position, potentially, but the part-time position is like, you know, Tracy has to cram a lot of stuff into three days. And I have a feeling it's leaking into Monday and Friday.
Oh, yeah.
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 And that's not fair to her.
No, it's not fair.
It's hard to do the job that you wanna do with a Tuesday through Thursday schedule. Like, I see the, her frustration.
So you're saying, so you're saying the problem of project manager part-time, there would be a similar situation?
Yeah.
So you're asking for a full-time project manager?
Well, I think that if I were to somehow figure out a way to, to get more of my stuff, more of my administrative stuff.
So if you had administrative assistant?
Something along those lines.
That's a different thing.
I know, I know.
I think that's a better.
That's what I'm saying, like, I move into the project manager.
Is that easier to hire too?
I think that's more in line with what I'm thinking, is you need somebody to do tasks for you, whether, whatever they may be. What would you rather do?
I'd rather be out on.
Well, you need to be, cause you're still the guy.
Doing things.
You're, you're in that, no matter what, because you, that's.
Right.
You can't get, you're not gonna be able to get away from that.
Right.
You know, if you hire a project manager, they're gonna be expecting to be the one in charge of the project.
It's also like, um, it's also like, uh, I don't know, like, making certain, like, we're gonna have some transitions in the next five years. Potentially, and then we're gonna have, and, right, and then we're also, we're also gonna have, hopefully have a large, um, wastewater plant project that needs a lot of attention. I've been through them before, I've been through one before, and you need to pay attention. And so.
So what, the next step would be to develop a job description so that we can post it?
Right. Yeah.
And I think it should be for a harder full-time administrative system. Yeah.
I, I'm just, I'm not pushing to do anything right now, I'm just, you guys asked for.
Thank you, thank you. No, this is, this is what we need to do, we need to talk about it.
But in an ideal world, you're looking for a full-time administrative assistant.
Ah, I don't know.
Ideal world.
It could start as, yeah. It could start as part-time and then figure out that it has to be full-time, just like Kristen.
I guess though, that there's the budget consideration.
I lean on my office to do things that they're not responsible for sometimes.
So.
And they're happy to do it.
So the job description of, I mean, we need to, we need to start throwing a job description together of what would give you the most benefit.
I'm chewing on it.
Right, so start Johnson goes down.
It's not urgent and we don't have a budget for it.
No, but we, we got to.
No, but we need to build it into the next.
Right, budget season is a month away. And, and we, this is, this is important.
I mean, we're, we're gonna be in recovery mode for probably next.
Five years.
Five to seven years.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
But we're gonna have people retiring.
And we need to be well-oiled in that process.
We're already way more well-oiled than we were last year.
Correct.
But, but now, so maybe now is really a good time to, you know, kinda know how it's rolling, and maybe now's a really good time to think about.
Right.
What that position, what, what new position could be most beneficial.
Yeah.
To break the burnout and get the stuff done.
Right.
Cause it does seem like, I mean, I'm struck every time I come in there how the whole office focus has shifted to all these recovery things.
Right.
You know, it's rebuilding bridges and roads, and how are we helping our.
Well, it hasn't let up since COVID. That, that disrupted everything.
Yeah.
In their office, and it just, we haven't had a chance, an opportunity to get close to that tomorrow.
Right, but I.
Ever since then, but it's been four or five years, five years now.
But they, these are all full-time jobs previously.
Previous.
Except for.
Did none of it, what they're doing today.
Except for Kristen.
Except for Kristen, it was only.
Interesting.
Interesting. Yeah, yeah, but we've had that position for quite a while.
Yeah.
But, you know, you're, I mean, you and Casey and Amanda, those positions have long existed without this extra workload.
And I think that we also need to look at, um, some of our other positions in town, and how those, how they interact with, with cap stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Like, for example, the rec coordinator.
Mm-hmm.
Um, moving that into a more of a hands-on summer position where.
Or, or the L B R T committee gets put into the rec committee.
Yeah, I'm not sure why that's a paid position, to be honest with you. It, well, it was a paid position when, what's her name was, back when Reach was involved and they were co, and, and what's her name was, worked for Reach and worked for that part-time, and she was doing the hell of a job.
Suzanne Dan.
That's where it went back, right there.
So, all stuff we need to start wrapping around before budget season.
Wrap my lips around a little corn cob, so I wrap it up.
Tis the season.
On that note.
I guess I'm at home, I'm ready.
We did good, just over an hour.
Yeah, no, we did excellent, yeah.
Uh, just want, okay, so I just have one thing before we adjourn, just a public service.
Oh, good.
Coming to you from the yellow barn, that there are people down there seeking employees, if anybody's looking for a job.
Are they gonna put a sign on the, on the coming into Hardwick side that has some of the cabinet?
Black Dirt Farm is also looking for employees.
Okay.